Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting for November 28. I would like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mrs. Lavelle, can we please have a roll call? Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mr. Doring?
Here.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Here.
Mrs. Raciyo?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan? Mrs. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are the student board presentations from our representatives. First, we have Paige Twohill giving an update from Lyman Hall. Hi, Paige. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Riley and I'm a senior in the class of 2023 at Lyman Hall. I'll be giving some updates from Lyman Hall, starting with our student council updates. We held our annual homecoming dance on Friday, November 18th. It was a great success and we had over 400 students attend. A great deal of our ticket proceeds were donated to Master's Manor. Lyman Hall held their annual community day on November 11th, and our students raked a bunch of the elderly's homes in Wallingford. Some general updates from Lyman Hall is we held our haunted hallways event and it went very well. We had hundreds of students come through our doors and we had a great deal of student volunteers. On Wednesday, November 23rd, we had our annual pep rally to prepare for our powder puff game. Students participated in a variety of games, sports teams were recognized and dances were performed. It was a great school-wide event. On November 16th, we had our National Honor Society induction ceremony, where we had many of our juniors and seniors inducted in. Our color guard and our band team had a great season. At Nationals, our band placed third and our color guard placed first. Our Lyman Hall Deca chapter just finished their sock drive that they created and we collected many socks and we donated a lot of them. For our school counseling department, we have our onsite decision day, which will take place on December 2nd. PSAT scores will become available to students in early December. As for our sports, we had our first ever hockey versus youth hockey game held at Lyman Hall and all of the proceeds of this event went towards Lyman Hall's Best Buddies chapter. There was also a volleyball versus faculty game, which was a great success for our school. This is some words from our athletic director, Mr. Baker. The fall season has come to a close with powder puff and Thanksgiving Day football games. Thank you to everyone who came out to support the students of Wallingford these two days. Also, a huge thank you to the staff members that worked to plan both of these events and the success couldn't have been possible without them. Although we may not have had as many wins as we'd have liked to this fall season, the players and the coaches did a tremendous job. We had a huge amount of our student athletes achieve honors or high honors in term one and many of them were inducted into the National Honor Society. There were numerous events throughout the season during games that raised money for organizations such as Best Buddies and the Sisters Project. And there is no rest for the weary as the winter season gets started with hockey and girls' basketball opening up for tryouts and practices today and all other winter sports will be getting on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for stepping in on Paige's behalf. It is nice to hear the list of activities in person and all of the excitement that's going on. Thank you. Next, we have Martine Sheehan, Jacqueline Orlaia. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Leah Harrison. I'm a senior in the class of 2023. Some things that are going on at Sheehan are on Wednesday, November 16th, we encourage students to wear kids' school backpacks to school for spirit points and then later we had them donate them after the school day. These backpacks were then donated to the Meriden Boys and Girls Club and Sheehan gathered around 50 backpacks and additional school supplies to donate. This past week, leading up to Thanksgiving, Sheehan students participated in a spirit week, including days such as Barbecue Dads vs. Soccer Moms, Dress Up as Security Joe Day, Pyjama Day, Country vs. Country Club Day, and then finally Maroon and Gold for the day of the pep rally. This past Wednesday, the Sheehan girls' powder puff team took home the Samaha Bowl trophy, defeating Lyman Hall 34 to 0. After the game, Casey Deans was the first recipient of the annual Judy Samaha and Nick Ikonopoulos Powder Puff Scholarship. The following day on Thanksgiving was the Carini Bowl football game, where both teams put up a good fight, but Sheehan came out on top for a final score of 37 to 28. Brady Risaci was awarded offensive MVP and Sheehan Salvador was awarded defensive MVP. Sheehan is hosting a Toys for Tots drive December 1st to the 14th. And ONCE College Instant Decision Day will be held on December 1st at Sheehan for schools such as Southern, Central, University of New Haven, University of Hartford, and Quinnipiac. On December 21st, Sheehan will be hosting its second blood drive of the year for students who are eligible. The following day, December 22nd, Sheehan will be having their annual variety show during school hours. And then Sheehan will have a half day on Friday, December 23rd, which will be the kickoff to the winter vacation.
Thank you so much. It feels like it was just Halloween and we're talking about winter vacations already. Again, a lot happening there and it's nice to hear so much happening in person and all the activities. Thank you. Thank you both. Next on our agenda, we have presentations and awards. Mrs. Belizzi, do you like a little help with that?
Sure, that would be great. I'm gonna just take that microphone over there to get started. And Mr. Zacco, would you like to come on up and join me as well? Okay, good evening. We're gonna begin with the presentation of the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program Awards. So I am gonna begin with sharing the Lyman Hall recipient. Unfortunately, Mr. Corso is unable to be here this evening, so I am gonna speak on his behalf. And the student representative, the student person, excuse me, let me start over. The student we are honoring from Lyman Hall is Kane Deep. He's here. Come on up. Congratulations. I'm gonna share just a few words while you stand up here and take your award. Some comments that I had gotten from your school counselor was, "What made you stand out so clearly from among your peers is how innovative and academically gifted you are." She writes that over the course of your academic career at Lyman Hall, you've excelled at 11 advanced placement courses. Since the start of your freshman year, you immersed yourself in our STEM education curriculum course offerings. In addition to scholarly achievements, you've been awarded the Seal of Bilitracy in French because of your admirable intrinsic motivation. So what a wonderful honor and congratulations. We wish you all the best. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Zacco.
Thank you. Nellie, Nellie Kofler, come on up. She is the Sheehan U.S. Presidential Scholarship nominee. Congratulations, Nellie. This award is based on criteria such as involvement and service in the school and community, leadership and character, and academic achievement. Nellie is the valedictorian of the class of 2023. That is a very impressive achievement. She is an intelligent, motivated young woman with a strong work ethic and mature sense of responsibility. Academically, Nellie has taken and excelled in our most rigorous course offerings. In addition, she takes advantage of extended learning opportunities such as the UConn Mini Medical and Dental School Program and the Yale Young Women's Leadership Launch. She is also uniquely and impressively multilingual, fluent in English, German, and Spanish. Very impressive. Complimentary to her academic excellence, Nellie is an involved member of our school community. She has a passion for music, which she demonstrates through consistent involvement in band and orchestra, serving as the pit section leader in the marching band as well. Athletically, she's a member of the girls' soccer team and has also participated in indoor and outdoor track as well as tennis. Furthermore, Nellie is a member of the National Honor Society, leading the scholarship committee. She is also a member of several clubs, including this one that impressed me last year, I think it was, where she founded the TESSA Teen Empowerment and Social Activism Club and got the collaborative support of her peers and they created brochures, informational brochures, and organized a fundraiser around the important issue of sexual assault awareness. Nellie's ability to promote, educate, and raise funds for victims of sexual assault reflects her keen awareness and dedication to important social issues. Lastly, she has served her school and community in countless ways. She's determined to improve the school setting by spearheading school climate initiatives that have had a positive impact. She's an excellent choice for Sheehan's recipient for the U.S. Presidential Scholarship Award nomination and Nellie plans to major in biomedical engineering in a competitive university setting after high school. Congratulations, Nellie. Vincenzo Carbone, come on up. There's another component to the U.S. Presidential Nomination Award that's focused on career and technical education. And so Vincenzo Carbone is the recipient for Wallingford's CTE component for the U.S. Presidential Scholarship nomination. Vincenzo, this is based on high academic achievement, outstanding character integrity, participation in extracurricular activities, service to community, and achievement in the area of CTE, Career and Technical Education. Vincenzo was a high achiever. He challenges himself by taking our highest course offerings as well as courses in the area of CTE. The technology education courses that Vinnie has taken provide him with a well-rounded background focusing on design and material processing. During his junior year, Vinnie won the RTI Computing Medal Scholarship Award. He even works part-time doing software installation. Whether in the classroom setting or workplace, Vincenzo challenges himself and excels in his learning pursuits. Vinnie is also involved in extracurricular activities. He is a member of our basketball and soccer teams, serving as team captain for both varsity sports. These leadership positions are a reflection of his character and maturity. Although as emcee of the pep rally, I saw a little crazy, a little bit immature side of you in a very mature way, so that was good. Vincenzo is also a member of our National Honor Society, serving as character committee chairperson. He's also received the Excellence in Spanish and Physical Education Awards. He also serves on our morning announcements team, adding his charm and sense of humor and very corny jokes to our morning announcements. And he's deserving of our district's nomination for this award in the area of CTE. He is one of those students who's kind and caring nature and humble leadership, provides a positive impact on our school and community, and he plans to pursue a career in the area of sports analytics in a competitive university setting. Congratulations, Vincenzo. The next set of awards is the National School Development Council Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership. And Vincenzo, sorry, I had you sit down a little early. Why don't you stand up here? And Alondra, please join us. Our two recipients are Vincenzo Carbone and Alondra Lopez. Sorry about that, Vinnie. We'll start with Vincenzo. I have a more abridged version of this one. In addition to the well-deserved compliment shared on behalf of Vinnie in the previous award, additionally, his dedication to community services is admirable. He has served as a basketball camp counselor, coaching and supervising elementary and middle school-aged children to develop their skills in the sport, in basketball, while serving, of course, as a role model. He has also volunteered at a local food bank, helped to lead park cleanup efforts, and produced podcasts for local radio stations. So congratulations again, Vinnie. Alondra, why don't you come on over this way? Our other National School Development Council Award recipient is Alondra Lopez. Alondra is described by her school counselor and teachers as innately intelligent, intrinsically motivated, and exhibits exceptional leadership skills. Alondra is a top performer in her class thanks to her strong work ethic and dedication to her academics. She challenges herself by taking the most rigorous course offerings at Sheehan. Alondra is also a leader among her peers. She serves as captain of the varsity tennis team and concert master for the string orchestra. She has also recently been recognized by our Board of Education as a student of distinction. She offers her positive, unique, solution-focused perspective as a member of our school district's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and is an advocate for the Hispanic community as a member of our school Adelante Titans organization. Alondra is also an active member of our National Honor Society and a member of our outdoors club and she even ran for a really long, impressive touchdown during this past week's powder puff game. Alondra plans to major in mechanical engineering at a prestigious university. Congratulations, Alondra and Vinnie, on this deserving award.
Thank you, Mr. Zacco. And I will present the two awards recipients from Lyman Hall. Can I have Brandon Costantino come up and Anthony DiAntonio? Congratulations to both of you. I think I know these faces well from Pond Hill. Congratulations. So proud of you guys. Good to see you both. I am sorry, Mr. Corso is not here, but I just wanna make sure I give these to both of you. This is Brandon's. This one for you. I wish you both all the best and congratulations again. It's great to see the both of you. Have a great one.
I just also wanna give the parents a round of applause because without you and all the carpooling and all the rides and all of the activities, first of all, I wonder if these students sleep because I was tired just hearing everything that they do. But parents, everything that you do for them, I hope you are enjoying the rewards as much as they are. So congratulations to you two. Thank you very much. Next, I have on our agenda, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Please come forward. I will read our statement and then you can provide your name and record, or your name and address for the record afterwards. Regarding our public comment, the board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views and to the board on matters within the board's authority. We ask that all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and in a civil tone and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the board and not to any individual board member or individual member of administration. Although the board values and appreciates the input of the public, the board and the administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the board and administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during public comment period and whether to address the issues on the agenda of a future meeting. Come on up, Adelaide.
Good evening. Adelaide Kopfer, Whiffle Tree Road. I have one senior left in school.
Congratulations.
And for that main reason, I don't really have much to say about the facility study in terms of one high school or two high school. I honestly am not in a position to talk about that anymore. But instead, I have some trivia questions for the board. Whoever knows the answer, raise your hand and you win bragging rights. So anybody knows, what is a building envelope?
Costelli.
If I respond?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not really supposed to respond yet. I do know what a building envelope is.
Next question would be, and so just in quiet, sorry. What does the acronym N E C H P S 4.0 stand for? N E C H P S 4.0. I have the answers all here and I'll be happy to leave them with you. Third question would be, what is a net zero energy building? And then lastly, how much is the price difference between building or renovating according to standard building code versus according to high-performance building code? And I can tell you, there's no price difference, but you save a lot of money. So I don't really expect all the board members to know those details, but the facility study update and the following updates is a one-in-I-wanna-say-30-years-opportunity for our district facilities to show our kids that we don't only care about their grades and their 21st century skills, but that we actually care about the place where they study in and the place they will be living in. And also, it's a great opportunity to save a lot of taxpayer money for our town by shaving down energy costs, which are the second-highest expense for our district after personnel. So we really need to get this right. Therefore, I respectfully ask the board, number one, please set that as a goal. Please make net zero buildings one of the priorities for any renovation or new construction, whatever it will be. Net zero buildings are also the healthiest for our kids and staff and they improve performance for all of them. Number two, please bring in the experts. There is the opportunity, and that's only one of many, for free consultancy of the Northeast Energy Efficiency Partnerships or similar organizations so you guys can get familiar with the basic concepts of net zero, high-performance buildings, and funding opportunities. And then third, please integrate net zero. Make it an integral component of any project design and any bidding process from the start on. Experience and performance with net zero energy buildings should be one of the selection criteria for design and construction contractors. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Kopfer, for your thoughts and your comments. Either way, they'll get it to us. Thank you so much. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is executive session. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
I have a first and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We are now in executive session. Thank you. Welcome back. We are now back from executive session and I will move on to the consent agenda. I will take a motion for consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.10 and 7.12 through 7.19. I have a first. Can I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Items removed from the consent agenda, 7.11, Approval of Proposed Adoption Revision of Geometry in Construction Course in Its An Addition Course. Ms. Reed, that's yours.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question, not being a part of the original curriculum meeting. In terms of the new course, Geometry and Construction, great that it's impressed with the interdisciplinary. My question is, will the standards covered in this year-long course, seeing as this interdisciplinary, does it include both Common Core math, you know, national math standards as well as the state CTE standards?
So the course is a mathematics course in its foundation, so it covers our Wallingford indicators, which are built upon the Common Core state standards. The curriculum will be developed in conjunction with CTE. At this time, there are standalone courses. Professional development will occur interdepartmental and the vision for the course in general is, in the future, to have it, for example, we run a block schedule A-B. The math course will run on the A-days and the CTE residential construction class will run on the B-days so that the students who are involved in both can apply the learning within the math class to the CTE class. As much as humanly possible and as the schedule allows, while we continue to grow the course, will be collaboration between the two departments, both in terms of writing curriculum, professional development, as well as application of the mathematic standards.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed adoption revision of Geometry and Construction Course Addition. My motion to approve? Motion to approve by Ms. Reed, second by Mr. Votto. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is correspondence. Secretary Roscoe, please.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So our first thank you is from the interim principal of Pond Hill Elementary School, Mr. Craig Dirksen. And it is a thank you to Big Lots of Wallingford, very specifically Cindy Skarineski Bishop. And it's for the assorted school supplies that have been received for Pond Hill and that is in the amount of $586. And I would just like to read the short thank you note. Dear Cindy, thank you for your generous donation of assorted school supplies you gave to Pond Hill Elementary School. All of these supplies will be put to great use by our students and staff. On behalf of the faculty and staff, I want to express our appreciation for your kindness and generosity. Very yours truly, Greg Dirksen, the interim principal. So thank you so much for that donation. And we have one more. This was from the principal of Lyman Hall High School, Mr. Joe Corso. And it is a thank you to Nair for their donation of 3M assorted school supplies for teachers to use with students and in classroom activities in the amount of $6,191. So thank you so much for both of those donations. I know that they will be put to great use within our classrooms.
Thank you, Mrs. Roscoe. Moving on to committee reports, the first one is the ACES Governing Board. Mr. Ross.
We had a shortened meeting. We had a shortened meeting. They just brought up the fact that the number of people out on COVID, which is extremely low. And we went into executive session to talk about new hires and resignations. We came out and they listed maybe 30 jobs that are available and then after that, we adjourned.
Thank you very much. The next item is a system-wide PTAC update. Mrs. Latour.
So we did not have a traditional meeting this month, but we were all thrilled, enthusiastic, and proud to attend the Systemwide PTAC Parent Choice Awards. It was really a lovely evening last week. Lots of staff members there to celebrate their contributions to our students and families in the town of Wallingford. It was so nice to be able to be in person and to have everyone together at Lyman Hall in the auditorium. I think it was really just, it was a lovely evening and was appreciated by all. Our next regular meeting will be in December. I think it's the 20th and that will be at 6 o'clock and it's virtual.
Thank you. And I echo your sentiments. It was a really nice evening and it's always exciting to see the teachers get their little folder and then they go back to their seat and you can see them smile and open up and they get the letter that the parents or family wrote to them. And it was really nice to see the excitement in the room. And Mr. Doring, thank you for coming and I noticed a lot of teachers were your former teachers and it was very interesting to see them too. There was a nice, it was a lovely touch to have a PowerPoint this year. So as each school was announced, it went up on the PowerPoint and all the names were there and the teachers, really, you could hear everybody like, woo, get all excited when they were up on the screen. So it was very, very nice. I'm happy that it was so successful. And I guess next year, we'll be back over at Sheehan because it was Lyman Hall this year. So we look forward to that. Next item on the agenda, Special Education PTAC update. Mrs. Turner.
Good evening. In October, we had Martha Carston, one of our middle school teachers, present to our parents, our families, even some students about dyslexia and what are some strategies at home that they can support their child with dyslexia as well as early identification. So if you're concerned, what are some signs that you may see? We were really proud to have Martha present and excited that she volunteered her time to do that. Tomorrow is a different presentation. We're really excited to have a representative from the Bureau of Reprodation Services come. They're coming to present on the Level Up Program. The Level Up Program is for students with disabilities with either an IEP or a 504 plan, ages 16 to 22. Level Up provides support and education for job exploration, work-based experiences, driver's license support, counseling for post-secondary education, various things for students with various disabilities. So not, usually we discuss about the services after high school for those with significant needs. This is more for children with all needs in the high school setting. So we really encourage parents to reach out to us to attend. It is going to be virtual tomorrow evening from 6 to 8. It is going to be virtual tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is a great program. Our next one is Food Service Strategic Planning Committee, and Mrs. Roscoe, do you want to give an update?
Sure. We have been very busy in food service. We have a lot going on, very specifically the ending of universal feeding, and so there's been a lot of correspondence going out to parents through Parent Square to identify, and, you know, what are the next steps that need to be taken in order to load money into the appropriate accounts so that children are able to still receive meals at schools? And so Mr. Bondi has been working very hard on making sure that correspondent is going out every single day, so that parents are able to really stay on top of that with that ending. Just a quick reminder, we do have the applications for free and reduced meals, and so if that's an area where you feel like your family could be serviced, please reach out and get that application filled out. We've also been talking extensively about breakfast coming to the middle school. That is coming soon, and there's been a few little hurdles that needed to be worked out, and so Mr. Bondi has been working very diligently on executing that as well. So more to come on that, and hopefully it is coming before the end of the school year, but don't quote me on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
End of the year, not the school year, sorry. The end of the year.
All right, so you saw my disappointment.
I'm sorry.
End of the calendar year. That makes me much happier. Thank you. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Has there been a meeting, Dr. Thompson?
We did not have a meeting last month, as we're still trying to constitute our committees, but I did have the pleasure of meeting on November 16th with the Wallingford Community Partnership at the Wallingford Public Library to talk about our work and our vision. And our next meeting is December 20th, and we have six students who are joining the committee with a few more invitations out there. So we're really excited about putting the student voice in the work, which is the most important thing.
That is awesome.
Mrs. Raccio.
Yes, Ms. Vado.
Mr. Thompson, can you just give me an idea, what is the objective of this committee? What do you hope to achieve?
I think the, in a nutshell, the goal is really to put a awareness in the, you know, the work that's being done throughout the schools to promote kindness and acceptance and tolerance, and to make sure that we're holding ourselves to that standard. And is there a way that we can work together across schools and throughout the district to continue to foster that type of, those type of opportunities?
And you said children are part of this?
Yes.
And who else?
We have some teachers, some administrators across grade levels, across positions, and students from currently both high schools.
Thank you.
The CAPE report is next up, and that would be me. Superintendent Belizzi and I attended the CAPE conference two weeks ago. It was a lovely conference, very well-attended, back in person, and I have to say, the highlight of the conference for me was the student representatives for the lunch panel. They absolutely rocked the room. They were very deliberate with their messages. They knew their audience. They really challenged us to go back as board members and think about our roles as board members and how to include student voice in all that we do. And just very specifically, if everybody went back and made one change to include more student voice in what they do, how much we can move the needle to represent all students in public education in Connecticut. And it was a pleasure to use a PTO day and spend it with you, Mrs. Belizzi, and it was definitely a well-used day, and it was also nice to sit with other board members and hear that they have the same struggles and many more struggles than what we do. We are very fortunate in Wallingford to have the support that we have and to have the families and students and central office team, along with our teachers and administrators, so we are very, very lucky, and I recognize that all day as well. So thank you for that opportunity. Next on the agenda is old business. I don't have any, so we will move on to the Instructional Committee update, and that is to Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado.
Thank you, Ms. Raccio. First on our agenda, the only thing on the agenda for Instructional Committee, is the approval of acceptance of some resignations. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Patrick Kozlowski, effective December 16th, 2022. Patrick Kozlowski has been a school counselor since August of 2012. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Christopher Daley, effective December 15th, 2022. Christopher Daley was hired in August of 2008 as a high school math teacher. He has been an athletic director since August of 2015. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Samantha Stanton, effective January 7th, 2023. Samantha Stanton has been a special education teacher since November of 2016. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I'll turn it back to Mrs. Raccio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti and Mr. Vado. Moving on to the Operations Committee, Mrs. Castelli, you're running solo tonight.
Yep, that's me. So on our November 14th Operational Committee meeting, Mr. Barone reported the projected surplus for the month of $456,000. The tuition account is included this month, and there was a projected deficit of $355,000. Benefits and transportation had an increased projected surplus this month. Mr. Barone explained the columns on the Munis year-to-date report, because I requested that, because that was kind of confusing me. Then we went on to the Cafeteria Financial Report. Mr. Bondi reported that there is a projected monthly surplus of $84,994, and a year-to-date surplus of $194,818. There were 95,653 meals served, including breakfast and lunch during the month of October. Mr. Barone and Mr. Bondi spoke about possibly changing the format of the B2, which is one of our documents, year-to-date comparison document. The remaining smart funds balance is $142,251. Consensus of the Operation Committee was sent to the financial, was to send financial reports A1 and A2, and the cafeteria reports B1 through B7 to the full board here tonight for approval. Our Maintenance and Facilities Projects Update was presented to us by Mr. Deptula, who reported that there were minimal changes to the project summary. He reviewed the turf field updates. The SLR is the company doing the design work for the Sheehan Track and Field and the Lyman Hall softball field, and they have completed all of the necessary studies. Full specs and prints will be ready by the end of the year, and the project can then go out to bid. And then we adjourned at 6:29, and we had a 29-minute meeting. I will go on to the next item on our operations agenda, and that is item number 13.2, Discussion and Possible Approval to Gather Information on Potentially Adding a Cell Telephone Tower to Lyman Hall High School's Smoke Stack, and I will defer that to Ms. Belizzi.
Good evening again. So we had received a request from Mayor Dickinson for the board to consider allowing a company to come on, the Structure Consulting Group to come on and do a site visit at Lyman Hall to determine if it is something that they can add to the smoke stack there. They are looking to add an antenna with brackets and a concrete pad at the base of the stack and cabling for, to increase the Wi-Fi capability there. So it's something, or cell tower there. So something that they want approval from all of you to consider, allowing them to come on to do that. Mr. Deptula would be with them as they come on and do the site visit to gather information to see if this is something feasible. This is a town-owned property, but it looks like they would like our approval to make sure that they can do that.
So, Mrs. Belizzi, if I'm hearing you right, this is just an approval to go on the property and walk the property as a site visit?
Correct.
And then whatever comes out of that would come back to us to say, okay, we're going to do a tower, we're not going to do a tower?
Correct. We'd gather more information from this site visit.
So this is just for the site visit?
Correct. You'd just be approving the site visit.
Thank you.
But the town does approve it, correct? Because they're paying.
Right, it's a town-owned property, right.
It's yours, Kath, it's mine. Sorry, I have a question. My, my, okay. I have a question, Ms. Belizzi. Are they aware that there's a potential that we will be removing the smoke stack at some point in the near future, well, the next few years, if we renovate our schools? Just a heads up to them that maybe that might not be such a great idea. I don't know.
Right, I mean, we can definitely share that, that this is, you know, that they can go on this site visit, but
Right, but I mean
Things potentially could change.
Exactly. They may not want to bother walking the site if they know that in three or four years, it's not going to even, there's the potential it won't even be there. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, we can let them know that. I'm sure Mr. Deptula can share that when he goes with them for the site visit as well.
Okay, unless Mr. Deptula realized, knows, you know, that it's not an impact anyway, you know, whatever, he's kind of, what do you think?
This is not the first time that this has been looked at. I don't know.
I'm sorry, Mark.
We can't hear you.
The mic's not working, or maybe you're not close enough to it?
Anything better?
That's better.
Okay, so this is not the first time that this has been looked at, and the last time it was reviewed, they chose a different location. There are some issues at Lyman Hall, and nothing's changed, so I believe that this vendor will probably find the same difficulties that the last one found.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions regarding this topic? Thank you, Ms. Belizzi. Item 13.3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Mark T. Sheehan
Kath, do we need to take an approval to let them?
Yep, you're right, sorry, we need approval. So I will ask for everyone's consensus, it's just consensus, I'm assuming, right? We need to take a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we agree to allow, do we have a name of the company? Just to just allow gathering information on potentially adding a cell telephone tower to Lyman Hall High School's Smoke Stack.
Correct. Where you're asking, or I'm asking for approval for the site visit from Structure Consulting Group?
Structure Consulting Group, thank you, that's not here, it's not on there.
I'll second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. 13.3, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Mark T. Sheehan High School Track and Field. I believe that would be you, Mr. Deptula.
Okay, so I don't recall if we shared the number with you guys, but we have, we have that potential cost figure. Was that shared?
No, you want to, I didn't do anything with the handout, so do you want to verbally just share what the company, the study did, what they found, and then the prices for each? That would be great.
We're sitting down.
So we've reviewed everything, and there are still some final decisions that would have to be made, but the price tag is estimated to be 1.8 million at this point.
To do both?
This, for Sheehan, it's item 13.3.
That's for the track and field modifications at Sheehan. And that, that's, that's par for the course right now, that kind of seems where the pricing's going on all these types of jobs. Of some of this material, the increase over the past couple of years is astonishing. I think originally we budgeted, we were planning on spending about 1.4, and we knew that over the past year and a half, that price has drastically increased. So we would be, you would have to come up with that 1.8 million dollars. There is a little bit of a chance of value engineering some things out of the project, but the savings is minimal, and I would not suggest doing that. You know, there were a couple of things that weren't originally part of the project that the school has asked for, and they seem very minor, to the tune of like $150,000. In the big scheme of things, that's not enough to value engineer those items out. The scoreboard is not original to the field, I put that in, but when you look at today's technology, it is antiquated. It's not LED. Today, it would be LED, they last a lot longer.
Ms. Vado.
Did you say to refurbish the field or just do it over completely?
It's, it's new, it's new fabric, new infill, the fine grading, if that doesn't have to be done, there will be some savings there. That's, they're planning on grinding the track like you see done on highways and roads, so they'll grind part of the track away, they'll leave the majority of it and resurface that, re-coat it. It'll be a new rubber coating, new lines. The curb that runs around the field will be replaced. There's a couple of options there, so those decisions have not made yet, but the prices won't vary, they're going to be similar either way.
So if we approve this tonight, is just to continue to move forward with a, go out for bidding or for, what's our next step?
We would want to go out to bid the beginning of the year, January, February, certainly no later than that. When you get in, you start getting into March, and it's really too late.
Right. You know, I'm thinking back to when this field was first done, I believe Mary Fritz had gotten some kind of a grant from the state, and I don't know how much it was, I don't know what, under what umbrella it was, if it's still available. Do you know anything about that?
That money was earmarked for the Sheehan baseball field, and the reason there was the savings there was because we did that work in-house, so there was a substantial savings, and Mary had found out that that money was still in the coffers and still earmarked for Wallingford. Unfortunately, that money no longer exists, and the grant opportunities are very limited for athletic fields. I did find a few, most of them are geared towards communities with lower income, but there's, there's not a lot available. There are some private sector loans or, you know, grants that may give you up to like five to maybe six, seven thousand dollars, and in most cases, those are not what we're looking for.
Are the lights okay? Do they need to be replaced?
Lights are fine.
Fine, okay.
Lights were state-of-the-art when they were installed, and they're still, you know, they're still monitored by the company that markets those lights.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Reed. So if we're possibly approving to go out to bid, that's not a commitment to go through with any sort of, just going back to the fact that we don't know the future of the building? Okay.
That's correct. If the bid results came back and they weren't favorable to you, you certainly would not have to continue.
Mr. Ross.
Does that include working on the discus part?
We did include some, a pocket of money for that.
I guess currently, when they do discus, they can't see people in the bleachers because the discus shoots into the bleachers.
Yeah, we're well aware of that.
Okay, and is it going to include barriers for lacrosse?
For lacrosse?
Lacrosse, yeah, okay, thank you.
Ms. Raccio.
Thank you, Mrs. Castelli. Mr. Barone, I believe last year I sent you an article about Portland getting $500,000 in Senate bond funding, and they worked with their representatives and had it written into a legislative bond. Is that something that, since this is a long session, that we can get in the queue? I know you had reached out I know you had reached out to the business manager in Portland, but I'd like to explore that as a possibility, as to how we can, what do we need to start that paperwork and possibly get in the queue? Is it just the specs, or do we need an actual bid from an RFP?
I would also, am I on here? I think we also need to think about the full funding of this too, even if we were to get the bond, some kind of a grant to do this, because, you know, we probably need to have a project laid out and say, you know, it's at least probably the cost estimate to see, you know, who, how are we going to fund this? Because really
Correct. So, I guess if they got $500,000 to do their field, what steps did they take before they applied for that and did that bonding paperwork at the state level? Because this was not a grant that was written in as bonding. So, they just got, like Mary had gotten funds for us in the past, they were given the $500,000. So, I think if we went to the town council and said, look, we've explored opportunities, we've looked at grants, we've got this bonding, like if we could come up with some of it, it may be more palatable for the town to invest the rest of it.
Okay. So, we want to see if we can get some help basically from the state on it.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can get something from the state
Okay.
like other districts have done. It was included in legislation, and it went through the Senate as a bonding. I can send you the information. I think I did, but it was a year ago, so I wouldn't expect you to remember it. I noticed it when it first came out that Portland, they got $500,000, and it was not a grant application. It was their representatives advocating for their town tonight. I can get it to you tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions? I just want to respond to Mrs. Reed's concern with regards to the future of Sheehan. Even if, this is my opinion, even if we should renovate Sheehan, if we should not renovate Sheehan to new, let's just say we decide to go with one high school, and it's not, we know already it cannot be on Sheehan property, that's been told to us by our Silver Petroselli, our firm that did all the study for us, that's still property of Wallingford. That field could still be used by the people of Wallingford regardless, unless they chose to sell the property. But we have already come up with a list of things that that property could be used for by the town. So, I personally have no concern with spending 1.8 million dollars to get that field ready for the kids that are there now, because one high school, if we go one high school, is years away. It's not going to happen in a year or two. So, just to lay that concern aside.
It's a safety issue.
Do you want to respond? Go ahead.
Totally agree, but I would like to go with what Mrs. Raci had said in terms of trying to find
Oh, absolutely.
sort of funding that we can to help us, because Mary Fritz was able to do it. So, is there something out there that we can help?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Ross.
Assuming everything goes according to plan, when will that field be ready?
That's actually next on the agenda. We're going to talk about that in a few minutes. Yes.
The field?
The, oh, not the field, sorry, sorry.
We don't want to talk about it today?
Absolutely. You know, if we get funding in a timely manner, it could be done this summer.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Thank you.
You know, and if for some reason you decide to delay or anything, we still own the design work. So, if you put it off a year, you still own that, so you don't lose anything. But you do, you know, you always risk the fact that the field is beyond its life expectancy and really beyond its useful life. So, I would encourage some movement if you can.
I certainly hope we don't even consider putting it off another year, because the people, anybody in the board that hasn't had a walk on that field should really take a walk on the field and on the track. The track currently, you can't even see the lines anymore, and the field is more rubber than it is green. So, we really can't put that off another year. Thank you.
I agree, Mr. Ross. Anything further?
I was just going to make the motion. Are you ready?
All right, go ahead, make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we authorize Central Office to proceed using the design work that was recently received to go out for an RFP for the Mark T. Sheehan High School Track and Field.
Second? Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor signify, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Awesome.
Last for operations is 13.4, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Facilities Study. And this would be Ms. Belizzi and Ms. Vado.
Good evening, everyone, again. So, I'm going to share some updates. We had a facilities committee meeting today at 4:00, where we had Mr. Vado and Miss Castelli, Mr. Doring, Mr. Barone, Mr. Deptula, and Mr. Stein joined us, who's here with us this evening, to kind of just, our agenda items were really to kind of go back and review a past survey that was done from back in 2019, which I can share in a moment, and what that focus was back then from when we had originally started. We talked a little bit about that and getting public questions answered. We talked a little bit about the fact that we have a January 9th meeting set up with the state. Our facilities committee will be part of that meeting, that is a virtual meeting, on January 9th at 9:30, and Mr. Stein and his team will be joining us as well. I did share with the state the presentation that has already been shared with everyone on October 24th with the state, and the purpose of that meeting is really to just have them hear the updates and the new study. It includes the elementary schools, as we know, in the past, we only did the middle and high schools, and see if there's any guidance or any feedback that they can provide to us as we move through and make our decisions and move it on to town council. So, we discussed that date. We also discussed January 11th, which is our community forum. We have from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, it will be virtual meeting, and then I believe starting at 6:30, we will have an in-person meeting where we can do a question and answer for the community members, parents, students, staff, whomever would like to attend. Location to be determined, we're going to work on that to make sure. But to circle back to one of our first agenda items that I had mentioned was, we spent some time kind of talking about the survey that was done in the past, and what those three scenarios were agreed upon at that time, and is it something that we want to revisit? And did we want to potentially redo a survey? If I can just remind everybody, in the past, May of 2019, we had sent out a survey to all community members, asking them to select a preference on three scenarios. One being execute a five-year maintenance plan. The second one, I believe, was renovate like new or as new all four of our buildings, which were two middle schools and two high schools. And then the third one, the third scenario, was renovate both middle schools to new and consolidate to one high school, which at the time was being proposed as the Lyman Hall high school area. So, we, the study that was done, and the survey that was done, it basically highlighted the fact that the preferences from everyone at that time was really scenario two, which was renovate all four buildings, and that was at 44%. It was a 2,000, I think, we had 2,900 members that had participated in the survey, and I believe today Mr. Vado had shared, as the committee members did as well, that it was a very small participation rate in comparison to all of Wallingford. So, from that, we discussed that we wanted to bring it to all of you to let you know that we had discussed that, but to kind of see if there was any feedback from that, from the rest of the board members. But we sort of landed on the fact that we thought it would be beneficial just to send something out to community members, to ask them to submit questions, so that we could get their questions ahead of time. We can, I can put together a document which has their questions and then some of the answers, and we can share that on January 11th, and still taking additional questions from the public, but at least starting to get some questions and people feeling like they can bring their questions somewhere to get us started. So, that was something that we had discussed during the committee. Did anyone want to add anything else to that portion of kind of what we talked about We also kind of went through and talked a little bit about the elementary schools, and we know from the facilities study that it identified some needs at the elementary schools, and we sort of talked about recommendations to all of you and opening up to conversation about what we thought we should do with the recommendations from the elementary schools. And kind of going back to the motion that Mr. Vado made during our November 14th meeting, and it was a focus on making a decision by January 15th regarding the middle schools and high schools, but we didn't address what we wanted to do with the elementary schools. So, we had talked a little bit about that, and wanting to bring that here to all of you to kind of discuss. Mr. Vado, I don't know if you wanted to read through what your motion was, just to remind everybody from November 14th, what we were
I think I prefaced the motion by saying there was no way we could accomplish elementary, middle, and high school, so let's just put elementary in the back burner and concentrate on the other two. I think the motion was that we have to decide if we are going to focus our attention on middle schools first and then the high school, or high schools first and then middle school. That was the motion, basically. But going back to the elementary, we also discussed today that doing the alterations that some of the schools need, we know now what they are, what it will cost. So, perhaps we could prioritize those things that are most needed at this time, and possibly over a period of a few years, include those things in our budget. And we do it in a, do it that way, in a step-by-step way. Of course, we'd have to ask Mr. Deptula to give us some kind of prioritization as far as what would need to be done in the schools. But anyway, that would be put on the back burner. I think right now, the motion says, do we put our efforts toward a middle school, renovate to new, new or whatever, or high schools first? And that was the motion. So, that's where we stand right now. So, I guess, well, January 15th was just a date that we threw out there, I threw out there. That's a Sunday, so I don't know what we're going to do about that. But the motion was approved, so we do have to decide, remember, this is not to decide one high school, two high schools, it's to decide in which direction do we now go? Do we go and concentrate our efforts on the middle schools, renovate to new, knock them both down, build a new one or whatever, based on the last study that we just got? And/or do we want to concentrate our efforts on the high schools? One, two, renovate to new, brand new, whatever. I think we need to get moving on this project. That's my personal opinion, and I think that's why I made the motion. So, that's where we stand with that.
Ms. Reed?
Ms., sorry.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question in reviewing all of this
Okay, that I asked.
as best as I could before this meeting. So, on page 35 of the October 24th report, I saw where it stated two high school renovate as new would be 53.22% reimbursement, and one new high school would be 43.22% reimbursement. However, in the PowerPoint, which I don't have the date of, I think was at the last meeting, it said the reimbursement for either would be 53.22%. So, I was wondering about that discrepancy, if anybody could answer the
I do know that the reimbursement rate will not be set until we actually go through the application process, because as our enrollment declines, so does our reimbursement rate. If we're not utilizing, if we do both high schools and we're not, we don't have as much utilization, our reimbursement rate is going to go down. I don't know. We won't have a firm number.
Yeah, I just wanted to
Here comes Mr. Stein. Save me, Mr. Stein.
I'm sorry, there was just a discrepancy between the two, between that, I know it was October 24th report, and then I think it was the presentation at the last board, but there was a discrepancy between the two options, because one report, the recent one, was saying 53.22, and I know it might go up or down, but for both, whereas the prior one was saying one was 53.22, one was 43.22. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear, the reimbursement, as best as we can at this point.
Yeah, I don't have the report in front of me, but there are two different rates for new. There is a different rate for new, and there's a different rate for renovate as new. It is correct, that rate that is sort of published as part of your rate will be adjusted depending on the size of the building, depending on work that may already be done. So, they are prorated accordingly, but at least that's a starting number. So, if there was a discrepancy between that, it's not, there's the same rate between both.
Okay.
There's difference between new, and there's a different rate between renovation, and those are published rates on the state website.
Okay, so the two high schools renovate as new is 53% approximately, and then the one new high school is 43%.
Correct.
So, there is a difference. Okay. Thank you. That was what I was looking for, clarification. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Raci?
I may be jumping ahead here, and people can shoot me, but I'd like to make a motion. I watched the meeting today, and it's my understanding that the next steps would be to have an RFP for an architect. The architect would use the facilities study that we've commissioned and we've received. They would evaluate the study with that, they would do design work, and they would assist with an application process. The application deadline would be June of 2023, would be our next time that we have to try to get that in. Even if that got approved in December of next year, which is 13 months from now, we wouldn't even start construction until the following June, which is June of 2024. And then it's two years to build, and it's a year to knock down and do site work, and so we're three years out. So, we're looking at 2027 until we're potentially done with this project, which is a total of five years. There's, we have the study, the facilities study. Our next, to me, our next logical step is to do an RFP. It's not going to cost us anything. Give the RFP to an architect, have them evaluate the study, do the design work, and help us apply for something. We don't know what the something is yet, but let's get the ball rolling, and maybe by the time January, February, March comes along, we have a decision as a board as to what the something will be, be it one high school, two high schools, two middle schools, whatever it is. But we would turn over the entire facilities study to an architect for them to start evaluating and doing some design work focused on the motion of looking at middle schools, high schools first. So, that's my motion.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure. I would make a motion to, for the board to authorize Central Office to go out to, with an RFP for an architect, to evaluate the facilities study, do design work, and assist us with an application process.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vado?
Do we, but do we first have to act on the other motion that we approved before we send an application in? Don't we have to decide first if we're going to concentrate on the middle schools first or the high school?
Yeah, but between now and January 15th, I'm worried if we don't do anything between now and January 15th, we don't have a chance getting something in by June.
June 30th?
Yeah. Because it's going to take the architect, it's going to take, Mr. Barone, how long would it take us to get an RFP through purchasing and get roughly, I mean, look what we just did with the architect for the field for Sheehan?
I just don't want to put the cart before the horse.
I know, but I don't want to miss the deadline. It's seven months out, and I think it's a very, very short window for us to get something in in June.
Can you just clarify the deadline to apply for the grant?
Just to apply for anything, to go in front of the state and say, what would our reimbursement be?
So, we need funding to apply for that grant, I believe, and Mr. Stein, you can correct me, but I believe that, let's just say we pick a project and it costs X, we need
We're going to need a commitment.
Funding
Correct.
for that.
Correct.
So, to apply for that grant
Correct.
The construction
We would have to go to the town council, show them the plan, whatever it is. They would have to bless it and agree for bonding or whatever funding that they would do. Correct. We would need their commitment to apply. Keeping in mind, if we get the grant and the reimbursement rate isn't what we want, we could turn it down. We're not bound by the grant at that point.
Correct. Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So I think we would need, and Mr. DePtoole probably would put this RFP together, but I'm thinking we would need a couple of months to get that, a month to get it through and a month to get it out. Does that seem reasonable? I'm sorry.
Can I?
We're looking at probably two to three months then, if two is the minimum.
Get the RFP out, and then what is it out for, four weeks, and then we get it back? And then we would, we'd have something to work with?
January. We get it back, call it the beginning of February?
So to continue the discussion on the motion, can we decide tonight if we want to do high school first, middle schools first? Can we decide that tonight?
Do we need to, Mr. Stein? Could we have, would we, have you seen architects get an RFP that, when you give them their town facility study that you conducted for us? Do you carve, do boards usually carve it out, like phase one, phase two, phase three? Like, what's typical?
Yeah, typically the scope, the scope is more narrowly defined here, and especially if your goal is to get an application in, it wants to be focused in on one particular project. If you are still contemplating the scenarios, that is going to, that obviously will take longer to formulate, because you're going to be looking at a variety of designs. So I think your, your point of trying to make a decision on what direction you need to go in, and that is correct, is part of the application, the funding does need to be approved not only by the Board of Ed, but also by the town council and the legislative body has to allocate and say they're willing to, willing to fund that project. They don't have to spend the money until the grant comes in, but they need to make that commitment prior to filing for that application in June. So it is a very tight window at this time to achieve all of that, to your point.
It's going to be hard to get it in by June.
So I would like to make a comment. Does anybody else have anything else? Okay. I personally feel the decision we need to make is whether or not it's one or two high schools. I don't think it matters at this point whether we're going to do the two middle schools first or the two high schools first. That, to me, to get, you got to get something to the architect so he has an idea of what he's, what he's architecting. Is it one school or is it two? You know, I don't understand how we can pass it off to an architecture if we haven't told him what our ultimate plan is.
But we already made the motion, and we approved it, so we have to do that first.
See, I did not understand...
I understand what you're saying.
I know, but I didn't understand the motion that you made last week, or whenever it was, to be what you're saying now, that we had to do... Do you, do you agree?
I agree with what I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't think we understood it that way, Mike, honestly.
Well, what do you do? You approved it, so now we have to...
Yeah, but I think it's a matter of interpretation of your minute, your motion.
Listen.
Here, wait, she's... Ms., Ms., Mrs. Reed?
Just, just a question on that, too. The motion is whether we're focusing on middle or high school, and that was a decision hopefully be made in January. We, on January eleventh, if I'm correct, have the public's ability to... So I, I would think we would want to go through that, since that's a motion to hear what they have to say. And it sounds like maybe the thought of sending out another survey was brought up in the discussion tonight or questions. So I would think that we would want to take all of that in before making the decisions that have been talked about here.
I, I agree. I think, I think our next step is, well, I think we do have to do something between now and June eleventh, not June eleventh.
January.
January, no, January eleventh, yes.
January eleventh.
Yes. And of course, that is, I think, getting ready, that Google Doc ready to go out to people to let them know that they can ask questions. And I think we, do we also want to incorporate into that, not just questions, but if they've got, you know, comments or, you know, not, in other words, not just questions, but have you thought about blah, blah, whatever? They might have some input or, you know, that they want to give us, and I wouldn't want them to feel that they had to put it in the form of a question necessarily. Mr. Vado?
If we don't work, if we don't follow the motion, and we have that question-and-answer thing, we're going to be all over the place. We're going to be answering questions about middle school, high school, middle school, high school. I'll read the motion. "We plan for a time for a public question-and-answer session, which we have done now. Following that session, the board determined what direction we go in regards to renovate to new or new in regards to high schools and/or middle schools by January first, and it was amended to say January fifteenth."
But you just said it, Mike, after the meeting on the eleventh, that we make that decision. That's what your motion says.
So we can't do, I'll withdraw my motion, because we, if, based on what Mr. Stein said, we can't ask, we can't even start an RFP, not that we would even get it out by January eleventh. So we can't, until we have all the specifics, start that ball rolling, which means I'm really concerned that we will miss the June twenty-third, or 2023 deadline. So we're, we're looking at, before we even apply for this, June of 2024.
You're right, it was after the public session, okay?
Right.
But that's why I said, after we have that public session of question-and-answers, then it says, then we decide, do we go in the direction of a middle school first and high school first? And I think Mr. Stein sort of said we should do that, we should narrow it down. Correct? Isn't that what you said?
I think he's saying you have to narrow it down to whether you're going to build to...
No.
Renovate to new or build new.
I don't...
Versus, I don't think it matters whether you're going to do the high schools or the, or the middle schools first or second. That doesn't matter, Mike.
I think my response was in, just in context of the question of filing for the application. So if you're going to put an RFP out for an architect, the scope should be well-defined as to what they're going to be spending their efforts on. So if the effort is focused in on a renovate-as-new scenario, whether it's the high school or the middle school, they need to know that. So I think as opposed to, if not, then their proposal is going to contemplate a variety of scenarios, which now their scope most likely is going to be larger than what you really need. So if you want to narrow down their focus, especially in a short period of time, you really should make your decision and then prepare your RFP based on that.
Are you saying narrow it down more than picking high school over middle school? Or narrow it down to a renovate to new, two high schools or one high school?
You, you really should focus in on, on the exact project as you want to see it. If not, then it becomes an enhanced feasibility study comparing those scenarios. But if you are, if you are putting an RFP to prepare an application, it should be focused in on what you're looking for. If you want them to just do a feasibility study and compare the options again in a more finite scenario to then get you to an application, that could be done, but that's even a longer period of time.
I wish I never heard the word feasibility study, but thank you.
Excuse me, sir, while you're up there. Just for protocol and for the people watching this on television, would you please identify yourself?
Yes, absolutely. David Stein, Silver Petroselli Architects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ray, I should have thought to do that. So, and maybe, maybe, maybe we all have different thoughts in our head about what this project is. So to me, this project is high school and middle school. Do we all agree that that's, in other words, when you're talking about an architect, I'm thinking he's, he's going to give us feedback on all, on, on both middle school and high school? No. Okay, so see, that's where I'm, I'm thinking differently then.
Well, that was the purpose of my motion, to kind of narrow it down.
But then, we'd have to then, so, so you're, so rather than having phase one be, let's say, middle schools, phase two be high schools, but have the architect do it all at once? We're not going to do that? We're going to, we're going to get the architect twice? Mrs. Reed?
And I think you may have been about to say the same thing. That's the information we're receiving from Mr. Stein, that really it should be narrowed and focused.
But the whole project can be both middle schools and high schools. It's always been that, right? We, we...
Not too narrow.
Well, well, I mean, back in 2019, it was middle schools and high schools. That's what we were looking at.
Right, so you're, I...
The intent was to do something to all, to all of those buildings.
That was one of the options. One of the options was, it could be renovate to new, however you phrase that, for the four buildings. That was, is that correct?
Correct. So I, right, I, if, and I'm just going to summarize for a minute. So I think what Mr. Stein was saying is that before we go out to hire the architect, we sort of need to narrow down exactly what it is we're looking for. So are we doing all four schools renovate to new? Are we looking at two middle schools that we're renovating to new and consolidating one high school? I think we have to be very...
But you just said exactly what I'm saying.
Specific.
You're doing, it's, we're, we, the project is middle school, high school. It's not middle school or high school, right?
That was my motion, though.
But that was his motion, that we have to decide by January fifteenth as to what is it, and what is it that we're doing to the middle schools, and what is it that we're doing to the high schools? And is it together, all four schools? Is it just the middle schools first, just the high schools first, just the middle schools all together? I don't, I don't, I think we have to, right. So I think we have to sort of decide, and we made that, and Mr. Vado made that motion, that that's not, that decision isn't going to happen until January, after January fifteenth. So I think we have to first have this, the, the meeting with the state on the ninth, gather their guidance. We'll have the public meeting on the eleventh, we'll get feedback from the public, and then at that point, I'm assuming we're all being a better place to make the decision as to, we're going to go out to RFP for X, whatever X is that we decide.
We have to make our decision by then.
Okay, so...
To the public session, right?
Mr. Ross?
I just want to be careful going into the public session, that we don't give the perception that we've already made up our mind, because that'll keep people away.
I don't think we said that in the motion. We did say we would, speaking out of turn, I guess.
Go ahead, Mr. Vado.
We would do this after the public session, right? So we want, we're not going to do that. We are going to do public session first, January eleventh, and then we, as a board, are going to have to make a big decision then, based on what we hear.
Right.
Based on the answers the people get. And then we decide, I think maybe you're right, Kathy, we decide one high school or two high schools, or we do the two middle schools.
Or, or, or two, one middle school, that could be back on the board now, back on the table, too, you know?
And then Tammy, if she rescends her motion now, can make that motion that she just made now, after January eleventh.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to find a way that we could keep this moving and get an application in for June of 2023, and I, that's just not going to happen, but it was, that was my goal.
Anything further? So there's no motion we're going to take tonight?
No, I rescinded.
Right. There's no motion we're going to take tonight, and my portion of this meeting is over. Oh, hold on, Mr. Vado?
I'm chairperson of the facility.
Yes, 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 I know.
So I just want to go over those dates. On January ninth, the facility is meeting with the state, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. On January eleventh, the board will have a question-and-answer session, both virtual and in person at different times.
Correct.
And before that, we're going to find a way to have people submit questions to you.
Questions and comments, correct.
And I would assume our chairperson would make sure that that night everything is orderly, have people sign up like we did in the past. And are we foregoing a survey or doing a survey?
Didn't, didn't we say at our last meeting that the survey had already been conducted, and there wasn't time to reconduct the survey, and it would be just...
I didn't know if we made a decision.
Oh, yeah, I thought that that had been decided, because I know that Raj was, Mr. Daring was asking about, sorry, about the survey, but it had been decided that the participation previously had been adequate, and it would take, would just add to the length of, of the entire process. That was my understanding.
Mrs. Reed?
But there is going to be the ability for people to submit comments and questions. So it's not a survey, but submit, okay, thank you.
So can we just have, just a general agreement that the fact that we're going to ask questions, allow questions to be asked, and we'll actually have answers to many of them if they submit them soon enough, by June eleventh, we'll be able to actually answer some of those? Is that sufficient, or just, is there anybody here that's really adamant about still wanting to have a survey again? Okay, good, so that's good.
I am done with my report, Mrs. Castelli.
Pardon me?
I am done with my report.
Thank you, Mr. Vado.
And with the help of Mrs. Belizzi, of course.
I'll turn this back over to Mrs. Racho.
Okay, let's see, it is, we are on to new business. I have, thankfully, no new business. Administrative report, that would be you, Mrs. Superintendent Belizzi.
Thank you. So I think we discussed a lot of the items that I already had, that I was going to share this evening underneath the administrative report. I just wanted to make a few comments. I know we discussed already or shared already about the system-wide, the Parent Choice Awards that we had, but it really was a lovely event, and it was really nice to see how over 200 staff members were recognized, and they really appreciated that recognition. So it was lovely. We did, the four of us did go, myself, Mrs. Latour, Mrs. Turner, and Dr. Thompson to the Powderpuff Game, and we had a great time. It was really a lot of fun. It was great to see it, we really enjoyed it. And, you know, the girls did a great job, both from Lyman Hall and from Sheehan playing out there, and we thoroughly enjoyed the halftime show as well, so it was lovely. We had a great time. So it was really nice to see and to, to kind of kick off the holiday season that way, so that was great. Just one more thing I wanted to mention, kind of a save the date, we are, we have begun planning for the Credit for Life event. It will be February twenty-eighth at Park and Breck, so we're in the beginning stages of that, so more information to come, but we're looking forward to it. It includes our sophomores from both Lyman Hall and Sheehan, and lots of community members who come out to support us during that day. And so we're starting that process of getting everything together, so kind of keep that in mind, and more information to come on that. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Latour, who's going to share some updates.
Good evening, everyone. November flew by and was a very busy month for the curriculum office. On Election Day, we held thirty-three different PD offerings for our staff, the majority of which were in district, and the curriculum office and teacher leaders were presenters, so it was really nice to be able to walk around the different schools and hear the different topics that were going on. A lot dealt with, obviously, curriculum assessment and instruction, best practices, social, emotional learning, so it really was a pleasant day. The Course Planning Guide is wrapping up for the 23-24 school year. The high schools will begin scheduling after the first of the year. As soon as the Course Planning Guide is completed, I will make sure the board has a copy of it electronically in your weekly email message. Over the next two weeks, we have four sessions with twenty staff members, admin, gen ed teachers, specialized teachers, intervention, multilingual learner teachers, to review the seven reading programs provided by the State of Connecticut as part of the Right to Read legislation. So while the group getting together, we'll hear a presentation from each publishing company, they'll have time to review the materials, and then we, as a group, will provide some reflections and insights about what the programs have to offer the students of Wallingford Public Schools. We are still waiting from the State of Connecticut for the waiver and what the criteria will be for our district curriculum to be reviewed by the State of Connecticut, but we felt it was prudent to quickly have these publishers come in so that we could continue to review them while we wait the state's decision regarding our curriculum. So more to come on that. The materials are in our central office. We have samples for grades K through grade three. Board members certainly are invited to review all seven of them if you so desire. There's a lot of stuff in the curriculum office right now, but I really am looking forward to hearing the insights of the different staff members. It's a representation from all eight schools, a different variety of years of experience, different roles. all eight schools, a different variety of years of experience, different roles. So it should be good conversation for us all to, to look at, and, you know, once a decision is made and we have more information, I'll be sure to report back to the Board of Education. Yes, Mr. Vado?
If I were to ask you, what reading program do we use right now? Is there a variety? Is there one?
There's a variety of instructional resources that we use as part of our district curriculum.
Repeat that again, please.
I said, there's a variety of instructional resources that we use as part of our district curriculum. So as you know, our curriculum is written by our staff members, aligned to our district indicators, and it incorporates multiple opportunities for, for different learners. It has different resources for vocabulary, for phonics, for comprehension, and grades two and three was just written and approved last year. Grades four and five was two years ago. K1 was slated to be reviewed and rewritten this year, but we've paused that while we're waiting to kind of see where we stand with the state.
Do you feel what we have now is sufficient?
I do. I feel that we have a very well-thought-out, comprehensive curriculum. We have worked really hard in the last five years to put together a curriculum that meets the needs of our students, to provide professional development for our teachers. I feel very strongly that regardless of what we see with the seven programs, that over the next two weeks, that we will fill out the waiver once we get it and figure out what we're supposed to submit, and then it'll be up to the state to decide what they want to do. The state not only will require the waiver, but our district data as it relates to universal screenings that we've done over the last several years. There hasn't been a whole lot of information yet. They're still revising and have not released the final version of the waiver yet to districts. So we'll see what else they require of us, and, and we'll proceed.
Have you had a chance to look at any of the materials so far?
I did. I unpacked them all, and, yes, I have.
Do you see parts of our program within those that we're already using? Maybe I'm asking too many questions. But let me just ask this. What bothers me is these, all these schools have come up with school improvement plans, and I'm assuming they're based on what they use now, the curriculum they are using now for reading, K3.
Yeah. You mean our schools?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are, all our schools use the same curriculum?
I know, but my point is, so they base their improvement plan on what they're using now.
Correct.
So now if we go with another program, that's going to mess up their whole.
So I'm just going to put this out there. It's not going to mess it up. It'll, it'll revise. Our, our schools are very adept at turning on a dime and, and moving through the different requirements that change from year to year. K3 will not only experience the shifts in reading, but in their universal screens as well, because that has changed from the state effective July 1 as well. So we have to shift that, and we'll work very hard to prepare our teaching staff for those shifts in, in assessment and instruction in the spring, once we know what they are. We've already reviewed the new list of K3 universal screeners. We did that back in September, and, and we'll see what this round of presentations brings.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Reed?
So first of all, I just wanted to say again that appreciate very much the time and effort that staff is putting into looking into these programs as well as doing the waivers. So we're covering ourselves and learning along the way probably also. And also, I would say I'm confident in the fact that the written curriculum by our staff and faculty is, is based off of curriculum, uses resources, but if we had to change resources, the curriculum is the basis of what they're using for instruction. So I'm confident in what work they've already done regardless of the outcome.
Correct, and the state has been very clear that the model curricula slash programs they've provided for us, while they'll need to be used daily, there's still opportunities for supplemental instructional materials. So some of the things that we have started using in the past, for example, the Hegarty curriculum, the past for an assessment, will continue to use as a supplementary guide to assist our teachers in building their small groups, teaching explicit skills to the students who need them, who have, you know, areas of strength and areas of growth, and, and we'll continue to proceed in that way. Any other questions?
I'll make mine real short. So in November, for the Professional Development Day, we had a really productive day working with all staff on assistive technology, exploring different tools, exploring the different assessments and checklists to identify who needs assistive technology and what that would look like, and really just having conversations about the opportunities that we already have in the district and how teachers and families can take advantage of those. We are lucky here in Wallingford. We have many resources for our students. Some were before COVID, and then even after COVID, we've expanded significantly. A lot of our students have advocated for themselves, and we have regular education teachers as well as special education teachers using assistive technology on a daily basis. So our kids are in a really good spot there. We also spent a lot of time working on the new IEP system. Once again, I know it's a repetitive record for me. So all of our teachers, as well as our counselors, had the opportunity to do a question and answer session with our wonderful coordinators and department heads as their leaders. They just ask those day-to-day questions that they're running into. There are a lot of quirks to the system and a lot of daily, just things that we're not looking for, looking at, that the teachers had questions about. So we were able to answer those. I would say our teachers have really, really worked hard to grapple with all of the difficulties with the new system. They're communicating with their families, and they're working together. We're very lucky here that we have such strong, dedicated staff that are really moving forward with the system, and they're not, they may be grumbling to themselves, but they're not grumbling to me as much as they could, which is great. We have really great staff. And just one other thing that we're working on is we just started a task force for school refusal and school avoidance. This is something that we really are starting to see pre-K through 12. Students are really struggling coming back to school after the pandemic, and it's a different, there just aren't as many resources in the community to support some of our students that are really struggling with mental health. So we have a task force. It's on a voluntary basis, and once again, just amazes me, we have 18 staff members across the district who have volunteered to participate in this task force to see how we, as a district, can move forward to really support our families, support our students in just coming back to school, really engaging in school again. So that's something that we're looking forward to. You'll be hearing about that as we go forward.
Thank you all very much. We are very, very lucky in Wallingford, and I will echo what I said in my key report, for the staff and the families that we have here and the resources that we are able to provide for our students. So thank you all for your work with that. Moving along to announcements, our next instructional committee meeting will be Monday, December 5th via Google Meet at 6:00 PM. Our operations committee meeting is a Tuesday? It says on here. Did we move that? Is that going to be a Monday? It's a Monday? It's a Monday, December 12th at 6:00 PM, and our next monthly Board of Ed meeting will be Monday, December 19th, and that will not be here as normal. That will be in our Board of Education conference room due to a scheduling conflict. So that will be at 6:30 PM at the Board of Ed offices. And with no other official business to come before the board, I call this meeting adjourned.